Hello everyone and welcome to this non-Facebook Live event. The reason I'm saying that apparently we have some technical difficulties with Facebook Live and so if we get that fixed during the event, we'll be back on Facebook. Meanwhile, we are recording the event and as we always do with a Facebook Live event. And we'll get that distributed, had it posted pretty close to within, you know, within right after the event's over. So, um, so welcome to this. I am very pleased to have a special guest with me, the council member Janet St. Clair with the Island County Council, Island County Commission. Are you a commission member still at the Island County or council?
Yeah, we're commissioners over in Island County.
Okay, all right, all right. So the title is right. It actually matters for folks, for all you constitutional geeks out there. If you're a home rule charter county or not, and you're a council number or a commissioner, it actually, it actually does make a difference. If you're, if you're tracking that, and I'm sure at least three of you are. So I want to thank, thank Janet for coming on. This is a Facebook Live event to talk about the American Rescue Plan specifically. What the Island County, how Island County sees it, how Island County might use the American Rescue Plan. And generally about the pandemic response. And so I'm looking forward to hearing from Janet on some of the things happening in Island County. I want to give a few moments to her when I'm, after I'm done. Trying to give people a background on the American Rescue Plan. And I've got some questions prepped, Commissioner, so get ready for those two. They're all softball quick. You know, one thing you'll find, and I'm sure you can speak to this, before we went live here, I was asked, we were talking about town halls and that. You, you probably haven't been asked a question that you already haven't been asked at this point. About either the pandemic or federal help or anything else, or land use in Island County. You probably would ask all the questions. So there's hardly any surprises. Except if I were to ask you your favorite sports team or something like that, that might come as a surprise or something like that. So work related, you probably haven't got any, I don't have any surprise questions for you. But I do want to talk about the American Rescue Plan, let folks know about that before we launch into some Island County things that we'll hear from the Commissioner. If you want to think about the American Rescue Plan, think about the, I guess, the four things. One is, it means shots in the arm. It means reopening schools safely, putting kids in school. It means putting money in pockets. And it means putting people back to work. Probably the four main things that I want to leave with all of you with regards to the American Rescue Plan. It includes some priorities that I've worked on specifically as well. And that certainly addresses the Washingtonian struggle with the economy as a result of the pandemic. So the first thing I want to, first thing I want to address is getting shots in arms. The issue I've heard most about, I'm sure Commissioner St. Clair has heard most about is when am I going to get a vaccine? When is it my turn? Why aren't there enough vaccines? And just two months ago, on January 27th, we were then 38,000 people in Island County had received COVID-19 vaccines. So last month, I sent a letter to the Biden administration to address some concerns I'd heard from in Island County about vaccine distribution challenges. And not directly related to that, because I wasn't the only member of Congress writing to the Bidens about this. But because of the American Rescue Plan and because of the President's executive actions and the hard work of healthcare professionals, about 35,000 doses have been administered in Island County to date. In fact, as with Janet yesterday on Comeno Island, at the Comeno Senior Center to look at their vaccination process, their vaccination site, along with the Comeno Island Fire District Chief. And just great work you guys are doing there Janet, and maybe you can talk a little bit about that when we get there. David administered 5,900 doses so far just through that, that system that's up on Comeno Island. But this public health response actually will lead to economic recovery and there aren't any shortcuts. And that's why vaccination strategy is so important. And the American Rescue Plan includes $20 billion to implement a, a national vaccination program. That includes helping counties like Island County pay for more personal protective equipment, paying for contact tracing, paying for testing, paying for treatment, paying for the health they need to address, healthcare disparities as well. A second element of the ARP is putting money in the pocket for working families. The Economic Impact Payments are now being banked out. Now, you might know them as relief checks or stimulus checks. The official name is Economic Impact Payments, so I call them EIPs. And 80% of all adults and 77% of all children in our state will receive an EIP. This time including checks for mid-status households and for adults dependent. That, this payment built upon the $600 down payment from December's pandemic package. So that $1,400 now and $2,000 then, that's the $2,000 EIP promise that I and many others made to achieve that promise. The plan also includes $300 a week in federal unemployment compensation. To help tens of thousands of our neighbors in our state keep food on the table, keep a roof over the head, just to pay their bills. That $300 a week for federal unemployment compensation was extended through September 6th. So if you want to check on the status of your payment, it's easy. You go to IRS.gov. And there's a big check my payment clicker there, icon there to check your payment, IRS.gov. The bill includes $120 and a half billion to help schools reopen safely. Schools across Washington State continue to assess whether in-person, hybrid, or online education is best. And the governor said the Public School District will be required to offer students at least a hybrid learning schedule and do that by the end of April. The Rescue Plan includes, as I said, $120 and a half billion. It's a big number, but think about this. Stanwood Comeno School District is going to get about 3.4 million. Oak Harbor, about 6.2 million, this is for the school district. Coopville, about 1.5 million. And South Wibby School District, about 1.2 million dollars. The plan also includes resources separately to help address digital divide, broadband access, Wi-Fi hotspot, and expand broadband availability. I know Janet has some thoughts on that as well. I want to get to those. We want to put Washingtonians back to work. And this is, I think, where Commissioner St. Clair commented would be really, you know, all of it will be interesting, but really interesting because of the fact that the ARP includes money for state, local, tribal, and territorial governments. The Wibby News Times recently reported that the Rescue Plan delivers more than $22 million for Island County and communities in the county. The preliminary aid estimates for Island County government is about $16.5 million. Oak Harbor City Government, about $5 million. City, a town, sorry, Town Coopville, $430,000. And the town of Langley, $250,000. So obviously interested to hear how, what kind of thinking is taking place in Island County right now about how to use those dollars that. And I'll just note, a bill that I've worked on and got incorporated in the American Rescue Plan impacts the women and men who work in the aerospace and aviation sector. You know, we always think about Boeing, but there are hundreds of companies throughout our state that are in the supply chain to build airplanes, or Boeing and Airbus, and that's not Gulfstream and others. They build the parts, they learn and build the parts and components that go into airplanes. That's the supply chain. Largely forgotten in this debate about helping workers. And we, I put together a bipartisan bill. Did you hear that? A bipartisan bill in Congress. Yes, it does happen once in a while. And that bill was incorporated in the American Rescue Plan. The bill is called the Aviation Jobs Manufacturing Protection Act. And there's a $3 billion allocation in the bill to support keeping women and men on the job in these supply chain companies, as well as bringing back people who recently furloughed. And as air travel returns and airlines start buying their planes again and ordering new airplanes, we need to shorten that timeframe when the supply chain can begin supporting building the parts and components to build these airplanes. And again, these are, these are companies that our neighbors work at here in the Northwest, so very real impact locally. There's a variety of other issues that I wanted to just conclude here to say, I understand we have a long way to go to recovery. The American Rescue Plan is about relief, but we are starting to turn the corner, look at recovery. Thursday, we had a hearing in the Transportation Committee with Secretary Peter Buttigieg of the Department of Transportation to hear the administration's first public thoughts on a transportation and infrastructure package. And I think that we need FBR-like investment in our transportation and infrastructure to invest in economic recovery, to create jobs, to, to build out our infrastructure in a way that's more equitable than it has been in the past, as well as building a cleaner and greener transportation system. And I think we can do that. Sounds like Secretary Buttigieg, you're looking along the same line. And next Wednesday, the President will roll out an infrastructure package and sit for PA and we'll see what he has to say. So that's a lot to absorb, but appreciate folks listening in. And now I do want to turn to Commissioner Janet St. Clair. Are you still in your first term? Is that?
I am.
Over this last year, it probably seems like nine terms, but yeah, your first term is Island County Commissioner representing Comeno Island and part of north, if I get that right, north Wibby Island as well. In terms of the district, but as a Commissioner, you run countywide as well, you know, generally. So you actually grew up in all of Island County, but you live on somewhere, somewhere on Comeno Island, I suppose. I'm not right. And you're coming to us live from your office on Comeno Island and the new Comeno Center. Congratulations on that great project. I got to visit that. And again, that's public investment in infrastructure, putting women and men to work. And then the end result, providing better services and better access to county government for Island County residents. Commissioner Janet St. Clair, turn over to you for a few minutes to talk about the American Rescue Plan. Thanks for joining us.
So thank you for having me Congressman. This has been an extraordinary couple of years. You're right. It feels like last 2020 was 10 years long. We all come into this office with our dreams and hopes of what we can accomplish. And then life is what happens when you're making plans. So that's where we are today. And I do appreciate the shout out for our new Comeno Administration Building. That was significant in keeping people employed and keeping making government over on Comeno equivalent to the entire county and being able to access the same level of services. So excited to be here. American Rescue Plan is something I'm extraordinarily excited about because government listened and people complain that government doesn't listen, but I feel like the federal government did some deep listening to counties across our nation with this in making it a multi-year plan that enables us to consider to build on our response, like you said, getting shots in arms. But also, Island County's been focused that the impact of the pandemic from the beginning has not just been a public health crisis. It's been human crisis. It's, it's had that economic, that human impact. So ARP helps us address that and then helps us pivot to recovery. So very grateful to be a part of that and for what we got last year and how it's helped us get to where we are today.
How do you, how do you propose to utilize the dollars?
Well, we're waiting for guidance from the Treasury at this point. So there's nothing firmly decided. We certainly are going to continue to invest in our public health response and getting our vaccination clinics. You were able to visit the clinic at Comeno Island Fire and Rescue. They are a high-throughput clinic, as we like to say, and they can do about 500 shots a day. We're hoping as we start opening up the phases and we need to get more and more folks vaccinated, we can close down the inside. And with that same facility you visited, we'll be able to do 2,000 shots in a day through a drive-through clinic. And so they're one of our core partners. We used our COVID response funding to help set that clinic up in Island County, as well as one on South Wibby. And then our other partners, of course, are helping us to achieve our goals on, on getting shots in arms and helping people feel safe again.
I have a few more questions for you certainly. And before I do that, I have a public service announcement. For those who tuned in, this week marked the 11th anniversary of the Affordable Care Act of the coming law. It opened the door to quality, affordable healthcare to millions of Americans, including those with conditions. Last year, more than 2 million Washingtonians accessed healthcare coverage through the Washington Health Benefit Exchange. The Biden administration recently extended a special open enrollment period through August 15th. About 200,000 people so far in the country have availed themselves of that. Washingtonians, you can all go to the Washington Health Plan Finder website. And that's at WAHealthPlanFinder.org to request assistance from train navigators and planning for health plans in 2021. And that's WAHealthPlanFinder.org. Sorry, my lights went out. We didn't move enough here in the office to keep the lights on. So we're going to push that right now. So Janet, what? It's hard for you to say because you have, you have commissioners you're, you're working with as well. But are there some ideas about what county government will be bringing back as a result of the use of American Rescue Plan dollars? Something that we have to bring back?
Yeah, I can certainly talk about some of our ideas. Everything from getting our backlog in our courts moved through. We used some, some funding in last year to set up some remote access and other ways to to innovative ways in our courts. We want to get our court backlog through. We want to make sure that people have that, that swift, swift response to justice. We've used it in our jails to reduce our jail population. So we've got plans definitely that we could use it for law and justice. We want to continue to focus on economic recovery and support to our small businesses. And that's embedded in the plan as well. Especially shutter, you know, closed venues and our, our lodging and, and as a tourist community, those businesses were hit hard. I'm hoping we can use it to rebuild foundational public health and recognize that this crisis taught us about the importance of foundational public health and to, to strengthen our public health system. And then of course, for me, my, one of my top priorities has always been broadband. So I'm very excited to see this multi-year approach that allows us to recognize something we always knew that broadband's critical for health equity, for educational opportunities, for employment. So excited to see broadband in this bill as one of the infrastructure ways we can, we can invest in, in our communities.
Yeah, separate from the, separate from the pot of money that would go to the state local government, which I think totaled with $350 billion. And I know Island County would want all of that, but you're only getting 16 million of that $350 billion. There was a separate pot of money, about 7.6 billion for broadband. Recognizing that for school aged children, there were gaps in what, in coverage for broadband and Wi-Fi access. Some of those were addressed through developing hotspots that could, that libraries could use. And some, some libraries throughout the district that represent were able to access dollars through the, I forget what the exact federal agency it's called, but through the, through the one that oversees museums and libraries. So they could buy hotspots for access. Again, this is an example of to the critics, you say, well, so much of this money had nothing to do with COVID-19. Well, I don't know. Ask yourself if the small business had to shut down, even though no one in the small business got COVID-19, but then to shut down because of the pandemic, I think that was pretty much related to COVID-19. If children had, had to go to school from home, but didn't have broadband or Wi-Fi access, and we spent money in order to help them get Wi-Fi access, I would say that's related to the pandemic. So this, that broadband is just one, one example. Can you talk, I want to come back to maybe some, some other things about the American Rescue Plan. Can you though, talk a little bit about what you're doing on broadband access regardless of, regardless of the American Rescue Plan?
So I'll be specific to COVID, which was, we did invest in hotspots. We gave funding in last year's package. We gave some of that funding to the school to help families that were struggling in whatever way to get connected. But the broader programs is we did do a, completed a feasibility study in 2020 in spite of COVID-19 and all those things and set up a long-term strategic plan to improve broadband in Island County. We turned in a federal USDA grant in partnership, or we facilitated in partnership with our fire and rescue and our library to create a Community Connect Grant that went in for Comeno Island in, in December of 2020. And I, I'm working with our, our local providers on possible grants that are coming out in, in I believe June with the reconnect programs. And that's for infrastructure. We need to get fiber in the ground. That's the future proofing we have to do for broadband. In the meantime, I think that the ARP can help us with some of the short-term solutions, like what they, this is where I get a little wonky and out of my pay grade on technology. But some of the LTEs, like they've used in San Juan County to extend point-to-point access to get broadband to some of those places where we don't have it. That can help our kids get connected. You've got more than one kid on a computer at any given time doing their homework. Those kids had got hit hard last year. So we need to recognize, like you said, that COVID was more than about whether or not you got sick. And it's also something we can use for telehealth. You, you met our paramedic dean yesterday, and, and he and I talk a lot about telehealth.
Yeah, especially in Island County where, you know, geographically, you know, Wibby Island's one of the largest counties in the country, but geographically, if you think Comeno and Wibby Island, we're not talking about relatively a lot of geography. But we are talking about a county with a lot of dead zones when it comes to broadband cell coverage access. And I drive up and down, you know, 525 and 20 a lot. And I, I know exactly where I can, it's always make my difficult calls right before I know my phone's going to go out. So I can say, yeah, I only have a minute, so you, let's do this right now. But I know that, you know, and I'll, I'll call you a half hour later.
Yeah, I do that with my mother. Anyway.
Oh, we're terrible. So so let me ask you this. What do we need to do differently from an Island County perspective, Island County perspective? Looking back at the federal government's name, you know, thank you very much, nice compliment. You know, one out of 15 things we get right, great. Even that one thing we got right, what, what needs to be better? What needs to be about doing better?
I think as we look at, I'm going to, the rollout of the American Rescue Plan, I really encourage the federal government and the Treasury Department to work with NACO. They represent-
It goes National-
National Association of Counties, I apologize. So the National Association of Counties, and I sit in those meetings often two or three times a month. They, they listen deeply to us and they will represent, how does this work on the local level? Especially when we're talking about programs in rural areas. It's one thing to roll out programs or services or, or vaccinations in an urban area. It's a whole different thing when you're two different islands. You know, it's an hour and a half for me to drive from my home to my main office on Coopville. So the, the challenges of being able to keep that local lens as we plan and making sure the Treasury Department doesn't create unnecessary administrative barriers to us just getting these programs and services out to the people we serve.
Before I go to some final questions, I have one more PSA, a public service announcement about economic impact payments to everybody. I'm calling, I call them EIPs, or relief checks, stimulus checks, we call them all sorts of things. The EIPs are going out. Many people have received them, some have not. And if you are eligible to receive a payment and you have not yet received either a direct deposit, you may receive a paper check or like my mom did in December, a debit card. She had no idea what it was all about. And neither did I. And as a member of Congress, I had to look into this. Is this thing for real? The debit cards are for real. You may receive a paper check or debit card in the mail, but check your status. Go to IRS.gov and use the get my payment icon to figure out where your payment is. And then do, do that before you call my office. Because the first thing we will ask is, have you tried the IRS.gov get my payment tool? You can take care of this yourself, but we're always willing to and ready to help, help folks out. Just a few more questions. What did, what did the Island County do with CARES Act dollars for small biz, small business? And is that on the list of things maybe the, for use of the ARP dollars?
Sure. Before I answer that question, I want to add one more thing to your last question, and that's the importance of supporting our rural health hospitals. This has been a big lift for Wibby Health, and they were the first one up and running. So the more we can do to make sure that we keep our rural hospital system healthy, that's critically important going forward. But to your question of what did we do? So we had $6 million roughly in CARES funding in Island County. And we used some of that, obviously, to set up our mass testing sites to, you know, do all of our public health. But we pushed over half of it into the community in terms of small business grants. And, you know, they weren't large, but they were significant to some of our smaller businesses. We are, I think, 90% small businesses of, of less than 25 employees. And that was critical. We also used it for, we were getting emergency rental assistance coming into our county, but no mortgage assistance. So we used it to complement that and add mortgage assistance to our communities. We used it for helping find new ways to market, to stay home, stay local. And we, we did the Gail the Whale campaign. You've seen this on all our buses. And so that was fun. We, we tried, we created an online and shopping guide so that folks could stay home, shop local. It, it was just, we met with community leaders and said, what do you need and how can we help? And that's, that's the gap we tried to step into.
That's great. Could I see Gail the Whale again, please? There, Gail the Whale. Gail, I thought, I visited with community or with Island Transit, and Gail the Whale's on the side of our Island Transit buses as well. So you see Gail the Whale, folks, you know, that's local to Island County. And for instance, supporting, doing one more thing to support locally. If you support Gail the Whale, you support Island County, for sure. On the, on the rural hospital note, and it's got a minute or two. Yeah, I have visited Wibby Health. I've visited the vaccination site there. And they, that organization's been hit hard from a revenue perspective on this. Want to continue, try to continue to support Wibby Health, the women and men who served in the Navy and their families at Naval Air Station Wibby Island. We're trying to ensure that, that they have the vaccination as well. And then of course, around Comeno, the other day, I also did, I also did a paycheck protection program tour last year and visited a few, a few businesses and organizations on Comeno that received PPP loans, including the Comeno Lutheran Church. So there's a lot of help out there. There's more coming. And we look forward to helping out. Any last words, words on this, this event?
Well, you're welcome to join us at our next Board of Health meeting because Wibby Island Naval Air Station, Dr. Kish will be presenting on what they're doing for vaccines in the, in the base. So feel free to join us.
What date is that?
Oh, April. Oh, you're going to ask me a question and I'd have to pull my calendar.
I told you, it's all softball, sorry. People should look, people should find that.
Yeah, it's like the third Tuesday in April. Other than that, it's been, the, the amazing thing about this pandemic is it did reveal the cracks, but it also revealed our resiliency. And what was so impressive to me, and you saw this yesterday, is the public-private partnerships. Government alone cannot solve these problems. But when we partner with our communities and we had over 500 volunteers step up and help us deliver services, everything from PPE to the vaccine clinics, to our testing sites. So this, this, the reason I feel like we were successful in unprecedented times, to use an overused word, was because of those public-private partnerships. We all stepped up.
Yeah, that's great. I always wonder why we don't have a term unprecedented time. Don't, we only have the opposite of, of it. So as a term that we use, but I, I want this to be the last unprecedented time for this pandemic. But it's possible that it won't be sometime in the future. But hopefully we've got a long list of lessons learned. And it turns, it all turns into lessons implemented and prepared. And it turns, it all turns into lessons implemented in preparation for. You know, the next, the next disaster, it may not be a pandemic, but there are lessons we learned from this.
That's right.
They apply to, you know, power outage or earthquakes, the things we have here, windstorms. There are lessons that we can learn that are applicable, that we can, that we can apply. But this one's been a rough one, but I will say this, with the vaccinations on board, you get three vaccines out there, a fourth one now under evaluation. More people are getting vaccinated, I think I heard yesterday, and on Comeno or Island County, thirty-six percent is the number. I think that folks have at least one vaccine, if I'm not mistaken.
We're at twenty-four percent in the county have had at least one vaccine. It was of all the vaccines in the county, about a third have been over on Comeno. Fire's done a really good job.
Yeah, great, yeah, and so, you know, it was zero, not too long ago, so zero percent not too long ago. So that work continues, that is the light, the light is getting brighter at the end of the tunnel. The tunnel's still long, we're still getting through it, but still much more optimistic about things, but. Let's hang together, wear a mask, stay healthy people. Practice good social distancing, and the weather seems to be turning, get outside a little bit if you can. And if not, call your friends and have them come give you a friendly tip as well, we'll get through this. Janet, Commissioner St. Clair, thank you very much for joining me this afternoon. It's Saturday afternoon and your local county commissioner is spending time talking about work, so. You know, that's a big deal, thanks a lot for giving.
Well, thanks for having me.
All right, thank you, bye.